Good afternoon, welcome to the July meeting of St Helens MBC Standards Committee. On the agenda today, which I'll run through, the first item is apologies for absence, I believe there are no apologies. And item two, minutes of the meeting held on the 13th of January 2020, are they agreed as a correct record?
Agreed, agreed, agreed.
Aye. Agreed.
Thank you colleagues, do we have any declarations of interest from members at item three? Okay, I'll take that as there are no declarations and then on to item four, the member code and protocols. So I'll hand over to Mr Fisher to take us through this issue, thank you.
Chair, before you go on, I've just had a message off councillor Sweeney, she's trying to get into the meeting and she may have to use her telephone, so unless somebody can get out to her, she just sent me a message on my phone.
Thanks councillor Quinn. Mr Fisher.
Thank you Chair, members will have before them today the report which sets out an intention to put the council to adopt five documents at its next meeting on the 22nd of July. Now the meetings are in the order which they appear in the report, sorry the documents are the Code of Conduct for elected co-opted members. Obviously this is an existing document, there have been consideration of proposed amendments to it by the Standards Working Group. Likewise, there's the Protocol for Member and Officer Relations, again an existing document which has been fully considered by the Standards Working Group. And also, there is the document which is commonly called the Planning Protocol, which again is a document that has been around for many years, which has been considered changes by the Planning Working Group. Now, those are three existing documents, there are in addition two new documents that it's intended to put up for adoption at the next council meetings. They are the Ward Member Protocol, which was, is probably a document that has been missing from the council's library for some time, so that's that one. And then there's a further document entitled A Member Led Council Developing Effective Member and Officer Relations. Now, I would say, and the report makes this clear, that in the, in the recent corporate peer review challenge, one of the, one of the requirements, or one of the recommendations findings of that peer review was the need to improve joint working arrangements between officer and members. So you'll see that you've got the Member Officer Protocol, you've also got the, a Member Led Council document and those two documents principally are aimed at addressing that peer review challenge, the changes there. Now, the way this has worked is that subsequent to the assessment by the Standards Working Group, members will be more than familiar that we have a significant change in terms of the senior leadership team of the council, in terms of the Chief Executive, the Place Director, Assistant Chief Executive etcetera. So it's felt worthwhile to actually ask them to have a look at these documents too and they've gone through these documents and they've equally suggested some further amendments to them, not significant amendments but some amendments to them. Now the documents that members have in the agenda, you'll see in particular the wording, where it's got black text, that's the original wording, where it's red highlights or red changes, that's changes by the Standards Working Group and to a lesser extent where it's got blue changes, blue highlighting etcetera, that's changes suggested by senior management team. So you will be able to distinguish where the particular changes have come from. Now there was, again as members will be aware, there was a private meeting of the Standards Working Group a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago now, and those, those members present decided that it would be worthwhile if full changes were sent out to each and every member, not just of the Standards Committee but of the council. And further to that, we asked for group responses on these changes in regard to the three documents and on the two new documents. Now there has been submissions, there has been group responses submitted with regard to the Labour Group, the Conservative Group, Liberal Democrat Group, and there's also been a comment from the Greens. There hasn't, I don't have any comments before me as it stands regarding any comments from the independent group. Now, if I may Chair, with your approval, I just wanted to set out what my thoughts were on these, on these submissions that were made, there's not a massive submissions from each group, so hopefully it might take four or five minutes for me to just run through on block as it were, what the changes were for all five documents rather than considering the documents individually, does that have your approval?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I'll go through the comments of the groups in the order that I receive them. So no priority attached to these at all, it's just the order that I've received them. So the first doc, set of comments I received was from the Labour Group. They suggested some amendments to some of the documents. I have attempted to email members today with these thoughts, so hopefully some of these thoughts will come fresh as it were to the members at the meeting today, but the thoughts are, in terms of the initial Member Led Council document, there was a view expressed by the Labour Group that this particular document, you should be looking at using plain English wherever possible. Now, I would, I would fully accept that, I think it's a point that was also made by the Conservative Group. So, it's intended to just insert that provision into paragraph eight, sub clause four of the Member Led Authority document, that we will be using plain English wherever possible in these documents. In terms of, I'll just highlight those, those parts where I have comments to make on, I won't say no comment on that, no comment on that, I'll just highlight the parts where I've got comments on. In terms of paragraph 10 of the Member Led document, my only thoughts on the comments of the Labour Group here, and I should say that all the political group views are to be found at appendix seven of the agenda, that's for anybody else watching who isn't a member. My only point here was that the Labour Group suggested wording along the lines of every effort shall be made to accommodate members, that's by officers, my thought would be all reasonable efforts, because in terms of if it's every effort, then clearly every effort, there's, that's what, that's what officers will do, whether it's reasonable or not, so the thought there was changed from every effort to all reasonable efforts. Those, those comprise the Labour Group comments on that document. In terms of the Code of Conduct, there was a very minor change suggested by the Labour Group in the sense of how a particular requirement should be expressed, as it stands at the moment, the provision in the code is a negative provision and the Labour Group thought it should be a positive provision in terms of the behaviour of the member shall be X rather than shall not be X. So, no problem with that, it's just, it's just the way you're actually phrasing it. There was comments on the Ward Member Protocol. Here, again, first bullet point of the Ward Member Protocol, is comment when, when the member should be submitting a submission to the council rather than the constituent. The suggestion was where the constituent was unable or unwilling to make that submission. My comment there was, it might be wise just to say unable, but otherwise the member is actually making a submission that the constituent doesn't want to make, so that would be my only point on that. Third bullet point on the Ward Protocol, this is relation to the assistance that democratic service officers could give to members and obviously it is hoped that members recognise that democratic service officers do seek to assist members wherever possible. In terms of the, the Labour Group submission on this, only a couple of points I would make, one of them is of course that the democratic service officers can't give assistance to members where it's purely a party group matter, it has to be a council member matter. And the second part is in terms of, they can only offer this assistance, this additional assistance where capacity allows. Obviously, at this moment in time with remote working etcetera, etcetera, there's various additional pressures placed on the democratic services officers. But with those comments, I don't have any, any further comments from the Labour Group, so those are the Labour Group submissions on the, on the five documents. In, in terms of the submissions from the, we'll deal with the Conservative Group next. These, these comments, sometimes they don't mention specific provisions in the documents, but I will, I'll just highlight which document we're talking about and then I might would deal with it from there. In terms of the Member Officer Protocol, there was a general question as to how the members should be informed of information that the officers have. In essence, the question was, well, what is a timely manner? And the answer to that is clearly that timely manner is giving the information to the member in a quick and appropriate way. I mean, that's the, that's the definition there. In terms of Member Officer Protocol, there was a comment along the lines on, again, it was difficult to identify which particular provision of the Member Officer Protocol it related to. But again, it was in essence about the information that should be passed to the member. So I think there was a general concern about the, from the Conservative Group about how members should be informed of decisions that officers held and again, it's a similar point really in the information should be passed to officers, it's not a question of withholding information from any member of the council, the information should be passed to the members of the council in a timely, quick and appropriate way. I think I've said previously that the Conservative Group again expressed a similar group feeling to the Labour Group in the sense that plain English should be used in all documents wherever possible and that's something that clearly it's very, very difficult to argue with. In terms of the, the other comments that the Conservative Group made, first one was relation to the question of improving, well, including the words in the Code of Conduct, perceived behaviour as well as actual behaviour and there was a concern about it wouldn't be possible to ascertain what perceived behaviour meant, well, in my view, it's just a question of normal interpretation, I mean that, that addition was actually put in at the request of the Standards Working Group. So, you'll see in the Code of Conduct documents that there's additional wording relating to perceived actions, that again, that's, in my view, that's capable of being interpreted and it's certainly something that came from the Standards Working Group. Again, another one that came from the Standards Working Group was a question of, well, what type of meetings does this, these provisions in the code relate to? Again, the issue was there, are we talking about, do we actually have to list all the meetings? Or should we actually just be taking a general amount of, general description of meetings? From my view, it's clear that there's six lists of meetings that are specified and it is clear that we are talking about meetings which are attended by the member in their capacity of a member of the council. So it's, we're not talking about where, where a member is having an informal chat with two or three members of the public as he's walking down the street for instance. There was also query regarding confidential advice and whether or not the member can pass on confidential advice. Clearly generally they can't pass on confidential advice to anybody, but the specific query here was, well, if the, if the member needed to clarify the position with a legal officer at the council, would actually passing on that confidential advice to the legal officer, council constitute a breach? And clearly it wouldn't, if, if the member clarified, sought clarification from a legal officer in council, then that wouldn't be a breach of, of the code. Final point was in relation to point 3.3 of the code, there was a question as to whether or not further categories of persons were required to be added. In my view, it's not necessary, if you look at 3.3 of the code, it's clearly, it clearly defines which categories of people we're talking about, which relations we're talking about. Okay, so, that's the, that's the views of the Conservatives Group. Now if I can just turn to the views of the Liberal Democrat Group, if you just bear with me while I find papers on that. Okay, well, the Liberal Democrat, Liberal Democrat views, here all these views actually relate to the Planning Protocol. So at paragraph seven C of the Planning Protocol, this is a query really regarding the identification of what should be set out in a meeting note. And the Liberal Democrats feel that the, the meeting note, rather than just saying a note shall be made of the meeting, it could actually says what should be specified in that note. And here, I wouldn't, wouldn't have any objection whatsoever if we specified what should be included in that note and that was primarily, we're talking about the names of persons in attendance, a summary of what was discussed and any actions agreed, so if that's something that wants to be added by the, by the committee, there wouldn't be an issue with that at all. Terms of paragraph seven D of the Protocol, here we, here we're talking about, well, the concern was expressed and this is, this is something that has been in the protocol for some considerable time, it's not new by any stretch of the imagination. Talking about where advice is given and the need for it to be impartial. And the suggestion was put that there should be a list of matters that can and cannot be discussed at pre-application meetings. My view on this is that it's not possible to actually draw up a definitive list of everything that can or cannot be discussed in the meeting. What we could say is that clearly those discussions shall only relate to the proposed application before them. And so, something very general like that could be added, but it's not possible to actually list a full list of those matters that can be discussed and those matters that cannot be discussed. Another point raised by the Liberal Democrat Group related to the, any, any group meeting prior to the Planning Committee taking place. Now on this, members will recall that this was in addition to the original Planning Code of Conduct. It recognised that up and down the country, this is a very, very common occurrence, where you do have group meetings prior to a planning committee. A suggestion made by the Liberal Democrats was that in some way, these group meetings prior to the committee should be monitored by council officers, i.e. there should be a council officer in attendance at the meetings, because if there isn't, then there's no way of assessing whether or not anything has been discussed in breach of a code or a protocol. Thing on this is that I think it's, it's clear that there must be a recognition that A, officers cannot and do not attend group meetings as a matter of course. And secondly, as in quite a few areas where members are discussing planning matters, there is a lot of trust that needs to be placed in the members. Example of this for instance was, members of the Planning Committee will be more than aware that they have to read all the relevant documentation to ensure that they consider all the material considerations relevant to the application. Now clearly there's, there's a trust level in that, because the only person who knows whether or not the member has read and is aware of all the relevant documentation is the member themselves. So, in terms of that, the, you know, it is common, it is necessary for the trust to be placed in members and it's, it's not going to be possible, my view is that it's not possible to require officers to attend group meetings prior to planning committee as a matter of course, it's, you know, to please them, that's not, that's not relevant. In terms of paragraph 16, there's a question here about whether or not, question, paragraph 16 is appropriate, but the thing here is that I would stress that paragraph 16, again, this, this was drawn up by an independent expert who specialises in these matters. So, it's, it's not as though this, this has come from nowhere, it is an appropriate provision to have in the Code of Conduct. Say it's drawn up specifically by an independent expert who considered that it was a provision that was missing from a document such as a planning protocol. And the final comment that was made by the Liberal Democrats that I have before me relates to the Chair of the Planning Committee and the role of the Chair of the Planning Committee generally. And this was, in essence, it was a proposal that the Chair should be subject to stricter controls than any other member of the Planning Committee. Now whilst I fully accept that the Chair of the Planning Committee is in a very, very important position and clearly must ensure that the way that the Planning Committee is conducted is fair to all sides, that, or compliance with that requirement would not require the Chair to be subject to stricter requirements than any other member of the Planning Committee. The Planning Committee Chair has to be fair, all members of the Planning Committee have to be fair. In my view, it would be unusual if Standards Committee or indeed full council sought to impose stricter controls on the Chair of the Planning Committee than on any other member of the Planning Committee. So those are my views on the submissions by the Liberal Democrat Group. The only other submission that I had was a representation from the, the Green Group which related to the complaints process itself, it suggested that there should be, under the complaint process, a requirement, or complaints handling process against a member, a requirement for confidentiality to be imposed. Would stress to members that this, this meeting is not covering, it's not discussing the complaints handling process against members. It's considering protocols and codes, if there is to be a review and if members did want to review the complaints handling process, then that could be a matter that could be addressed as part of that consideration. But my original thoughts on this are that it's not necessarily a matter that can be considered in this. So that's, that's just a summary of what the, the groups submitted. The, as I say, in terms of what the committee is being asked to decide here, the committee is being asked to decide to make suggestions and put recommendations to full council on all five documents, which will hopefully, hopefully see each and every one of those documents adopted at the council meeting in nine days' time, so with that Chair, I don't know if you want to hear any, any further from me at this time.
Thanks Mr Fisher. Oh, I can hear myself if you're down there, yeah. Sort of get a bit distracted, that's that. Thank you for your work on this. The significance of these documents, which all the elected members have to look at, the Democratic Services and as well as the working group. Being laypeople essentially when it comes to these, this type of documents and, and the, the legal words and technicalities used in it, it can be difficult and thank you for your patience and forebodings with us for asking for clarification on the meanings of words and definitions etcetera. It has taken a long time to get to this point. And I think, and, and all the groups and all members have the opportunities to look at all these documents and to make suggestions. And I would like today, if we could, I'm going to throw it open in a second for comments obviously. I'd like today to, to carry on in that spirit and hopefully move together the unanimity on what Mr Fisher has said, but, but I will throw this open straight away, if anyone wants to speak, can they please let me know by the chat button and the first indication I've got is councillor Sims.
Yes, okay Chair, can you hear me now, yeah?
Put your camera on please Theresa.
Put my camera on, oh God, right, okay, there we are, okay. Does it come on?
Not yet.
I'm pressing it. Just a minute.
Councillor Sims, I think what you're doing is you're pressing it and then pressing it off, you're on now, so leave it on.
Okay, right, thank you. I think in all of this Chair, I mean, all of our aims, the aims is to make sure it's a fair and transparent process and the protocols display that, right? With the last one, one we've just mentioned about members' involvement and members sort of speaking, who should speak, who shouldn't speak, I think there is a question as well as, in what capacity? I mean, there's nothing there to say, if that, if a member's speaking in the capacity of a councillor, that's one thing. If it's outside of that, the parameters that that entails and, and it's social media and stuff like that, that's another thing. Now, we haven't actually mentioned that and I don't know Mark, whether there's any differentials that sort of needs to be in there just to strengthen it. Okay.
Mr Fisher, do you want to deal with that?
Yes, I mean, I think, I think the answer, the starting point generally is of course that all these protocols and all these codes deal with the behaviour of the person when they are a member of the council as it were. If they're doing something in their private life which cannot be in any way attributed to their position as a member of the council, then that would ordinarily be outside of the remit of these codes and protocols.
So that, that, you're saying to me now that that takes care of discussion of council business outside of the parameters of the council or a meeting situation? Yeah?
We're just waiting for it, just waiting for the, the red. Yes, I mean, as you say, it's difficult to say, but if, if, if that particular member is discussing, talking about council business and it's, it's difficult as they are a member of the council to take the view, well, they're not actually acting then as a member of the council. You know, generally it's very, very difficult to be discussing something, council business etcetera when you are a member. But you, you know, if you're doing that, then really you're acting as a member of the council in 90, 95% of situations.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry, sorry, councillor Bond.
I think, I think that in every situation that may, may arise, a view has to be taken objectively about what, what the conduct is and, and what the council is saying and the capacity to say in it. And I think to try and, to try and define everything will, will tie Mr Fisher up, adding some items and trying to produce a list of what, of what would be construed as being acting in the past as a council and what isn't. I think it comes back to the issue with regard to a lot of the stuff that we've talked about, which with definitions is, what's the objective meaning of, of the, of the particular part of the Code of Conduct? What is it seeking to achieve? And, and trying to tie things down like that, I, I, I think we'd have difficulty with that. And trying to put lists together of what you can do and what you can't do in terms of speaking about different issues. I have my own interest in various different things, so I might be interested in, in employment rights and HR. Actually, I do my job in that regard as well, so when I'm talking about that on, on my social media, can be difficult to try and, try, try, try and distinguish between the two. So where that's quite clear, where somebody's speaking as a councillor, then an objective approach will be taken, I'm sure that's, that is the case and if I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm sure I'll be corrected on that.
Okay, thanks councillor Bond.
Thanks Theresa, I've got councillor Jones next, can you turn your camera off please councillor Sims?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, looking at all the
Yeah, looking at all that has been said by Mark Fisher about the comments of groups and such like, there are a couple of points on the comments we made, Mark, that I can't really go into in here, that are a little bit abstract, and it would be difficult for me to put them over on here and for you to answer them directly. However, when we look at everything, and I agree with the comments that have been made by the two other groups that have made the comments, that it's all a matter here of common sense. And I think that if we carry on, if we carry on adopting common sense, taking into account everything we have, taking into account everything that has been said by the groups, I think we'll come up with something near to something we can't get anything better for, if you see what I mean. I think we're coming up pretty close to the mark here in what we are trying to do, get, I mean, we will never get around to absolute perfection, but we're getting there, and I think we've got it about right so far. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Jones. I don't think you need to respond to that, Mr Fisher, do you?
No.
I totally agree, Alan, it's not a council of perfection. And it's taken a lot of work to get to this point from everybody, so I would echo a lot of those sentiments there, Alan. So next, I've got councillor Grokut.
Just wait for it to move over. Thank you, Chair. Just in relation to the last point about getting the documents to a point of perfection, but I don't think that anyone's yet mentioned that there might be another review in due course, that the LGA are consulting on another model version of some of these documents. So actually, we're quite well placed to carry on that conversation, learn from what works and what doesn't work, engage with that process with the LGA, and, you know, come back to this conversation at the appropriate time, as we review all of our policies and procedures, don't we, as a council? Just in terms of the comments from Mark, the feedback on our group's suggestions, I think they're all acceptable, and I think my colleagues and I are in agreement with those tweaks that just make them, I think, more practical. What's useful, I think, with this process, with our legal advisers, is helping us to put ideas of how we as members think things need to work on a practical basis into appropriate wording, so it's clear, so everyone can understand the meaning. So we're content with those suggestions, Mark. So, I mean, Chair, obviously, you might want to take more comments, but I feel like there's a, that Mark's, within his role as our impartial legal adviser, made some really useful comments about what's needed, what's practical, what's able to be drafted in a clear way. He's provided some clarification on points that people have asked for. And so it feels to me like, on the basis of Mark's response to us and those comments, there are some further changes that need to be made, but that we can, I hope collectively, agree with Mark's view on those, that some of the suggestions perhaps don't need to be taken forward, but have been noted, some of the concrete amendments that people have drafted that do go forward. So I hope we can, it's obviously difficult in a process like this, but I think Mark has set it out quite clearly which things he's proposing to take forward and others which have been noted and discussed, and perhaps won't be incorporated at this time. So perhaps we can move forward on that basis, Chair.
I don't have anybody else indicating that they want to speak on that basis. So if that's the case, just give cause of second, if they do want to speak, they can indicate. Nobody's indicated they wish to speak further to that. So councillor Grokut, do you want to, do you want to just clarify what you're going to move in that the agenda, this is intended to go to full council and the agenda is due to go out fairly soon? So councillor Murphy's indicated that she wants to speak. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. I've probably peened in what you were going to say. I was going to say, I agree totally with councillor Grokut's comments, and I'd be prepared to second what she's just said. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Murphy. So just to clarify exactly where we are with it, because it's intended this is going to go to full council next week, so it needs to be put on the agenda. Are we agreeing that it will go onto the agenda with the comment, with incorporating the comments made by Mr Fisher in terms of the amendments and noting some of the other issues? Is that agreed?
Agreed, Chair.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you, colleagues.
Agreed.
Agreed.
That's great. And so on that basis, we don't have any further business. But again, I will say thank you to all the officers who've been involved in it. Thanks to all the members, we've had a lot of members involved in this. It's been an interesting exercise over time, and we are in a situation where we can move forward on it. As councillor Grokut said, we may have to change it again in due course when the LGA come out with their new guidance. And councillor Jones, which before I finish, wants to speak again. Councillor Jones?
Yeah, thank you. All I want to do is to thank Mark for all his hard work on this. I think he's done a pretty good job, and we've chipped in and amended a certain little bit, but he's done a lot of good, solid work on this one. Thanks a lot, Mark.
Thanks for that, councillor Jones, fully echo that. So that concludes the business of the Standards Committee for today. Thank you all for your attendance, and once again, to the officers, thank you for your hard work on this matter. Goodbye.
Thanks, Chair.